Meeting to order for today at seven o'clock. I will ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, okay? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of the states. Thank you, everyone. Number three is roll call, Whitey.
Deborah Addy.
Here.
Mark Borchardt.
You're muted.
Mark, unmute. Are you here?
He's still unmuting, it looks like.
Mark, are you here?
There he is.
I'm here.
There we go.
Keith Fell.
Here.
Chris Hiltunen.
Here.
Christine Holcomb.
Here.
Tom Cozel.
Present.
Oh, Robert Muesling.
Here.
Whitey Simon, here. Kathy Schweickert.
Here, thank you, Whitey.
Thank you.
Item number, item number four is approval amendments to agenda.
If nobody has any additions to the agenda, I remember we've been chastised and reprimanded at the last meeting, and so I'd like to be sure that we follow process, procedure, and I guess everything else that we're supposed to be doing here. And I would like to move a point on the agenda under new business, as is been usual, that we send the member from our commission to the Board of Appeals, and so I would make sure that we have a a point on the agenda in which the currently apparently assigned individual would request that we approve that appointment.
Are you talking about you, the ZBA, Whitey?
Yes.
So you want to put that under new business, is that what you're asking?
Well, unless you want to put it before approval of the agenda, which would mean we'd have to vote to
Add it?
Add it. I so move.
And why?
Because it has been the process for this commission to send a person from this commission to the
Zoning Board.
Zoning Board of Appeals. This appears not to have been done this time.
In the past, I guess what's happened is when somebody's commission expires, if they were on that board, like for instance Harold's is done, so that's a vacancy right now, we just need to take care of, so that's kind of how we've done it in the past.
I'm also on the ZBA, by the way, folks, so I volunteered to do that. I don't know if you all have to vote on it, but
I
Well, I asked about it and they said it was a volunteer situation, but however you want to handle it, it's me fine.
Well, I would agree with that, you're a I don't think anyway, so
You can't, yeah. You can't serve on both boards unless you're appointed as the representative from the plan.
Thank you for that clarification, Rob, that was my understanding.
Good to make it official.
Thank you. I was told it was volunteer, so.
It is volunteer, it is, but, but what happens is, and again, welcome Debbie Addy, but again, what happens is, is at least, somebody could correct me if you're wrong, if I'm wrong on this, we get to the point somewhere on this agenda and we ask, would anybody like to be the board representative from planning? Yeah. Yeah, it's more of a formality, and sometimes, most of the time, we don't have a lot of people vying for that position, but, I mean, Keith has been the previous board on ZBA representative from planning to there, and Harold was after Keith, and I lost track of who was before all that, so, but I'll let Whitey continue, go ahead.
Well, if nobody wants to second it, it dies of a second, but that, as you indicated, has been our procedure, that somebody volunteers and we agree to have that individual then become our ZBA representative.
I'll second it.
All right, I have
Shouldn't it join the new business?
Hold on.
I have a question for clarification, so
Sure.
Now that Debbie is on the planning commission, Rod, maybe you could answer this, am I correct in assuming that she needs to resign as a ZBA member and then will be the planning commission representative to the ZBA, is that correct?
Technically, yes, because she was an at-large member, she would resign, and then if, but, you know, if she were to be appointed as your representative, then she would just continue serving, but in a different capacity, okay?
Because we're just talking about planning commissions representative, not anybody else's, not the board of trustees, we're just talking planning commission, that's
Just a technicality.
And I would, I really think probably the best way to do this is to amend your agenda to add it under new business.
Yes, I agree.
I think that's just a cleaner way to go, I would just suggest that.
I think that's where Whitey was going with it.
I think so too, but I just want to make sure that's, want to clarify that that's what he was doing, but.
Whitey, you want to start over again with that, so we get a clear record, please?
Make it one sentence.
Are you going to copy it for me, then? Move the, I move to append the agenda to appoint the planning commission's representative to the ZBA.
I second it.
Thank you. That was Tom, you?
Yes, Tom.
Can I, can I suggest that we add that to our agenda under new business as a new seat under new business, appointment of ZBA rep?
Right, so this
Many commission ZBA rep?
Yeah, that was the motion, actually.
Okay, well, so, all right, so the motion is just to amend the agenda at this point, you'll vote on the actual
Apply the new ZBA official.
Well, this is starting out confusing to begin with. Sorry about that.
Just so everyone's clear, the motion would be to amend the agenda to add a new item in the new business, which is appointment of a representative from the planning commission to the zoning board of appeals.
Very good.
As letter C.
Letter C, correct.
It was Whitey's motion, who seconded it?
Uh, my motion and Tom seconded it, yes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Does everybody understand the motion clearly now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, perfect, so then I would ask for a roll call for amendments to the agenda, how's that?
Keith Fell.
Yes.
Chris Hiltunen.
Yes.
Whitey Simon, yes. Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Deborah Addy.
Yes.
Thank you. Mark Borchardt.
Yes.
Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Robert Muesling.
Yes.
And Kathy Schweickert, the chair.
Yes, thank you, Whitey, appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, that takes care of item number four.
Uh, and now
We got to add C.
I move to approve the agenda. As modified.
I'll second the motion.
Who was that?
Me, Keith.
Keith.
How about we do this, since I know it's difficult with Zoom, when you make a motion and or second it, just state your name in the motion, how's that? It might be easier for Sue, who's trying to keep track of what we're doing, okay?
To approve agenda, and that was by?
Keith.
Keith, and seconded?
No, I seconded.
Oh, by me, then, thank you. Now, any more discussion?
Yeah, any more discussion, if not, roll call, please.
Keith Fell.
Yes.
Chris Hiltunen.
Yes.
Whitey Simon. Yes. Chris Holcomb.
Yes.
Deborah Addy.
Yes.
Mark Borchardt.
Yes.
Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Robert Muesling.
Yes.
Kathy Schweickert.
Yes. Okay, thank you, moving on to item number five, approval of minutes.
Um, I got an issue in there, the new business on the stone road, ninety-three oh five, third paragraph down, it's nothing big, it just says Cozel noted that special land use is not required, I didn't state that, I just pointed out that there's other businesses down the road that I know there that do the same thing, I didn't get into the C three repair for services, I know that was said, but it wasn't me, it's the only thing I seen.
Any other comments?
Maybe just say it was noted or something, just take my name off of it.
Are you following that, Sue?
Yep.
Thank you. Any other board member comments? No? All right, Whitey, roll call, please, for approval of minutes, please.
Keith Fell.
Yes.
Chris Hiltunen.
Yes.
Whitey Simon, yes. Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Deborah Addy.
I cannot vote, I was not at the last meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I knew that.
I love a good test.
Testing you.
Mark Borchardt.
Yes.
Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Robert Muesling.
Yes.
Keith Schreiker, Kathy Schreiker.
I got a new name. I'm going to say yes, you think that's not mine.
But, but Deborah, I actually listed you as not there on the one that I'm going to send in to Kathy and the building department.
Excuse me, Madam Chair?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
We made the motion and second, we didn't have a motion for the minutes, did we have a motion?
Yes, me and
You mean after the amendment?
Yes.
After the amendment.
Thought we did, no? In that case, I move.
Go ahead.
That we approved the agenda, no, we did. Are you talking about the agenda?
No, approval of minutes.
Minutes.
I thought we did that.
I didn't hear the motion, so I don't
Remember who made it, and it was seconded.
It was Whitey that made the motion.
Okay.
Approved the minutes, and then I said we had our amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Keith? Was that Keith, yes?
Yes.
Yes. That's no problem. We're a little rusty since last year, it looks like, but okay, we'll get there. All right, are we done with the approval of minutes and the roll, or the roll call, Whitey?
I think we have to do the roll call.
Yeah.
Paid it, we just did, anyhow. Keith Fell.
Yes.
Chris Hiltunen.
Yes.
Whitey Simon, yes. Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Mark Borchardt.
Yes.
Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Robert Muesling.
Yes.
Kathy Schweickert.
Yes, thanks, Whitey. Okay, item number six is new business, under new business, we now have three items, the first item is A, which is the master plan revisited, and I'm going to turn it over to Rod and or Eric, whichever one wants to go for it.
Yes, thank you, I'll take this one, as you are aware, the master plan went to the township board, and the township board has requested that the master plan update that was previously approved by the planning commission be distributed to the surrounding communities and reviewing agencies that previously got the draft, so the, basically, it's the draft that you formally adopted would now go out to the reviewing agencies, because this is a amendment to the last plan, and what we'll do is two different things, we'll send a complete PDF of the master plan, and then we'll also send a separate little packet with just the pages that changed from the version you sent out last time for the other agencies to review, to the one that you formally adopted, so they will know what page has changed, so this, because it's a, an amendment, has a shorter review period instead of the sixty-three days, this has a forty-two day review period, so our plan would be to, to distribute those, get that out later this week, and then the forty-two day period would, would commence, and then once that is complete, then the planning commission would need to hold a new public hearing, and then take action on the master plan draft, and then it would go back to township board again for final action, so we just wanted to give you that update, the township board has authorized the distribution of the, of the plan, so that, that part has already been taken care of, but we wanted to make sure the planning commission had that information as well, and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rod, any board members have any questions?
I do.
Hi, Whitey.
After we get it back from the approving communities and or review agent, reviewing agencies, we're going to have another public hearing.
Correct.
And if there are any changes that we make, as we perhaps could, do we have to go through that process again?
Well, that's a very interesting question, it, I guess a lot of it depends on what the change is, if it's fixing a typo, or if it's making something of a modest change, then I think probably no, I think if you're changing something that is considered to be more substantial, I believe it's the township's board's desire that it would get redistributed, that's the message that I got at the township board meeting, that they want to make sure that the complete draft that's, has had a chance to be reviewed by all the surrounding communities and agencies, so I think we'll just have to see what that is, I'm hoping there won't be any, because you've already approved it in the form it is right now, so hopefully it'll get approved just like you did last time, and go to the township board, but in the event that there is a request or potential modification, then we'll have to cross that bridge when we get to it.
Yeah, I think you would have to.
Yeah, no, you, you understand, I, I'm a fa, a fan of editorial changes, without having to go through the whole process again, that's all I'm concerned about, that we may wind up caught in a vicious cycle as we go through this, especially if we get many responses from the public hearing, and I guess my follow-up question would then be, as soon as it gets back, we would then schedule it for a, a public hearing the following available meeting, yes, hopefully?
Yeah, we would, basically, once the forty-two days passes, we would go ahead and just, if the planning commission is fine with this, we would have the hearing already scheduled, and it would just happen there, because there's really nothing to discuss at this point, you, it's a, it's a plan you've already approved, so that's, that would be the desire, is that we would just go ahead and get that public hearing scheduled, and then it would be on the agenda once the time is appropriate.
If you send them out tomorrow, we could count forty-two days, that'll get us, get us, I guess, into March, and we could almost set the public hearing for March then, right?
Um, it's possible, let's see, um
If not April.
Yeah, no, it could potentially happen, because what we could do is, we could plan on that, and you can notice it while the comment period is going on potentially, and as long as you have it after that, yeah, it is, it could be in the March meeting.
Thank you.
We'll have to double check and make sure all the notice requirements are met and the dates are met, but I, I think it's possible, not going to guarantee it, but I think it's possible.
Thank you.
Any other board members have questions, comments?
I do.
Go ahead.
So, any request or response we get back for a change, do we necessarily have to look at that change or, or make that change?
No, no, these are, any comments you receive are purely advisory, and you, you don't have to do anything, you just have to read them and accept them and take them into consideration, and you don't have to make changes because of them.
Okay. Will we get a chance to look at the amendments that went out, that are going to go out prior to them going out, making sure they're, they're the same ones that we voted on?
Well, the, the complete draft you had the night you voted is the same draft that's going out, so that PDF
Along with that amendment.
Well, the night you voted, there was a version that you had, a, a complete PDF of the, of the plan that had been amended from the previous meeting.
Right, okay.
But, well, let me, let me, let me restate this, the, you had made some minor changes at the, the night you actually adopted the plan, and those changes were made, and when you had that back with, in front of you at the next meeting, that draft that you had in your packets for that meeting was complete, and I believe you reviewed that and found that that was complete, and that incorporated everything that you wanted.
Okay.
Okay, I think, I think, I think that's
And that was the November seventeenth, that was the November seventeenth meeting when the planning commission approved it, and then we had it back potentially in December, but we didn't do anything, and that whole, that whole thing from November, or the master plan is what's now going to be redistributed.
Yeah, and the changes were made that you requested in November, and that's what you were given in December, so that draft that you received at this, in your December meeting packet, had all the changes in it, and so that's the version that's going out, that version you had in your December packet.
So if this will be highlighted with what the changes are?
What we will do is, we'll have the pages extracted that were, that were modified, and that will get sent to you to have in your packet as well, so you can, you know
So I think that's what the issue was, it was hard to tell where, what was actually changed.
Well, that, that's the one I want to see, is make sure that we don't, we had two amendments in there, the first one was ours, the second one was somebody else's, I want to make sure it's ours, is the one that goes in there.
Well, let me ask you a question.
Was it fully approved by the board?
Yeah, I mean, let me ask you a question, do you need another month to review that previous draft to make sure you're happy with it before we do this?
No, I got to guarantee that that draft hasn't changed, to incorporate someone else's verbiage.
Yeah, the, the version, I guess that in the, that you had in the December packet is the one that would go out, so if you read through the one in the December packet, and you were comfortable with that, then that's the one that's going out.
Okay.
From, from
Mark?
Yeah.
I believe that the packet that is described as going out is the one that was returned to us by your board, and that had all the changes in it.
Right, okay, that's good.
Right, the same one, the same, the same version that went to the township board is the same one that's going to get distributed.
So, so, from a timeline standpoint, just for your information, the first release for review occurred in August, so that was prior to your adoption, which is normally how it occurs, so this would be a, a double check to make sure these agencies have the most current language, and have no, and are satisfied with that, so that, they had an older version of the plan from, from the summer, so this would give them the more current version.
Any other questions from board members or comments? All right, the only, only reason I'm going to mention this at this time is that in our packet, we did have a, on one page, letter from Carol Sampson regarding the residential transition zone area, which I'm sure everybody's been receipt up, but that probably sounds like something that will be discussed when we get to the public hearing stage, so just wanted to mention it and acknowledge that we have received that in our packet for tonight. Anything further, Rod or Eric, on this topic, or no?
Ms. Schweickert, could you turn up your volume just a tad?
Sure.
I don't have my hearing aid in.
Oh, go get your hearing aid. Right off.
Thank you.
All right, I'm, if that's okay, then I'm going to move on to item six B, which is the Gilfelson Webster Annual Report.
Um, so in your packet, you received three documents which are, constitute the annual report, first, a detailed list, month by month, of agenda items, and you'll notice there was a little bit of a hiccup in the spring of last year as the, as the pandemic hit, and we transitioned to remote meetings, so that explains some of the canceled meetings that are in there, and then we know items that were approved or conditionally approved, and what the status of those are, the second attachment is, is just the summary of that, of that third list, so you considered two site plan reviews, three site plan special land use reviews, Lipinski Island Blue Horseshoe, if you recall, recently an accessory dwelling unit on South Channel, and some other cases, something of note is you conducted six public hearings, which is, which is good, you know, despite having the virtual meetings that you were able to still accommodate, six public hearings was, was something to be proud of, and then lastly are the text amendments, so we had four that were discussed last year, two were adopted, boat houses and shipping containers, and then two are still in progress, and are on tonight's agenda, so this is a, a report that goes to the township board, it's required by the Planning Enabling Act, so this is just a consent item for your information, and then lastly, on the second page of the first cover letter, are planned activities for this year, so as Rod explained, analyzing the master plan, zoning organs, text amendment, some of these items we haven't introduced to you yet, these are things we've been talking about with the building department, so you'll be seeing those later this year, and some other issues related to capital improvement plan and recreation plan update, so that's all I have, this, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much for putting that all together, really appreciate it, and for your comments, it's been a, last year was a very trying year, trying to conduct meetings and getting accustomed to Zoom, so thank you so much for that, appreciate that.
You must have kept better notes than any of us were able to, do we have to make a motion to approve and send it, or what?
Yes, they need, you need a motion to approve and transmit, transmit to the township board.
I'd like to make a motion to approve and send the twenty-twenty annual report to the township.
Second, it's Chris.
What's that? Chris?
Chris, second.
Thank you.
I, I have a question.
Dude.
I know, I note on the, thank you again, both of you, for, for a great job on this and, and breaking it all down for us, the boat houses and the shipping containers we show as adopted, do we know if those were approved by the township board, because that seems to be a point that they're saying we have not completed.
Mark, do you remember?
I'd have to go back and look at the minutes, I can't, I can't recall, that was a while ago.
Because I know the, the agenda for the township board meeting of February twenty-fourth had unfinished businesses, boat houses and shipping containers as auxiliary buildings.
Yeah, but then come back to the planning mission, the chances are they weren't approved then, or they would have been pushed right back to the planning commission.
Right? No, we put proofs and signing on those darn things.
So do we need to follow up and check to make sure that's been accomplished?
Yeah, we'll, we'll take a look at those for sure.
Okay, thank you, Mark, appreciate that. So I think we were on a motion.
We need to, roll call?
We're, no, we're at discussion.
No, we're discussing.
Under the text amendments for the future use, I'd like to put in rental, long-term, and short-term, as well as lease, I guess long-term would be lease, and what the owner of that rental unit needs to accomplish prior to releasing it to someone, such as inspected by Clay Township, and something up for discussion on how, and what we wanted to inspect. We have some life safety issues that need to be challenged on these rental units. Also, short-term, kind of the same thing.
So you want to do what?
And, and tiny home discussions.
I'm sorry, Mark, I'm not, I'm not following you, where, where are you wanting changes?
This is in, in, in the future, looking at ordinances. Oh, okay.
Is that on the first page?
Yeah.
Down there at the bottom?
We're set. Eric had mentioned, Eric mentioned them, yeah, boat houses, yeah, okay.
Which is a two impending discussion for twenty-twenty-one?
For twenty-twenty-one, exactly.
So you want to add to that, is that what you're asking?
Right.
You want to add the tiny houses? Because I think we're going to have a discussion on this bed and breakfast tonight, aren't we, the short-term?
Yes, we are, yeah, yes, we are.
I, I think Mark just wants to clarify the twenty-one business in, in a little greater depth.
Detail.
Okay, Mark, is that what you're trying to do?
So you're adding tiny, tiny houses, and what else?
Uh, leases.
They call them vacation rentals, towards the back of this paper.
They call them vacation rentals towards the back of this paperwork that you gave us.
Yeah, vacation rental, well, that, well, the tiny houses are, can be different than that.
It's different, yeah.
Vacation rentals is we're, yeah, we're already talking about that. Um, what else?
Uh, the, um, um, homes that they lease out, leases on the homes, long-term lease, three, three years, one-year lease.
Long-term lease.
Yeah, okay, so long-term lease.
Basically, any, any residential unit that is, that is up for rental or, or lease needs to be inspected prior to, uh, have a debt.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Okay.
I've had a long day.
By the way, can the host let Eric back in? He got bumped off and he's in the waiting.
Oh, sure, I'm sorry. Well, let him back.
Poor Eric.
I think this wasn't meant to go into a lot of detail here though, just kind of highlighting, high pointing the.
Yeah, it's high points, but yeah, sure, but, um, okay, so the, the, I think I've got tiny houses, um, long-term leasing of homes, and then the continuation of the vacation rentals.
Right.
Okay.
I'm not seeing Eric on here.
He's there.
I do.
He's there.
I did. He's gone again.
Yeah, he's gone again.
Oh, I see him.
I see Eric. Hello, sorry.
There's Eric.
He's, he's not showing up on, on my waiting list.
Eric is already back in.
He's actually back in now.
There he is.
He's under Gary.
No, not, not under mine, he's not. I think it moves around depending on your screen.
That's where he is right now. Welcome back, Eric. Okay, so we had a motion, we had a second, we had discussion, any more discussion?
Well, now we just amended it, right?
That's what Mark was asking, yes.
I, I would say that at least we have to, uh, indicate that we it was moved to approve and send the 2010, uh, 2020 annual report, uh, as amended to show uh, 21 activity regarding leases, rentals and vacation homes. Is that sufficient?
That's good.
Yes?
It work, Eric, or Brad?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody understand what's wrong? Everybody understand the motion? Roll call please then?
Okay, um, Tom Cosell?
Yes.
Robert Muesling?
Yes.
Keith Bell?
Yes.
Chris Hiltunen?
Yes.
Whitey Simon, yes. Christine Holcomb?
Yes.
And Deborah Addy is excused. Mike Borshardt?
Yes.
And Kathy Schweickert.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Item six C is appointment for a planning commission member to the ZBA. Usually what we do is we ask if anybody's interested. So I'm going to do the usual thing. If anybody's interested in the planning commission to be our board representative for the ZBA, raise, well, not raise your hand, just say something, say yes, no, or I want to do it.
Deborah Addy.
Okay, Debra. Anybody else interested or not? Not surprised.
If you have a fish online, you keep them, don't you?
We usually don't have a lot of people fighting for that spot, so.
Commander, I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve Deborah Addy as the planning commission representative to the zoning board of appeals.
And I, Keith Bell, will second that.
Okay, and that was Chris and Keith.
Correct.
And any discussion?
I was gonna say, any discussion hearing on Whitey roll call please?
Thank you. Keith Bell?
Yes.
Chris Hiltunen?
Yes.
Whitey Simon, yes. Christine Holcomb?
Yes.
And Ms. Addy, you get to vote this time.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mark Borshardt?
Yes.
Tom Cosell?
Yes.
Robert Muesling?
Yes.
Kathy Schweickert?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Debbie, for stepping up. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Um, moving on to item number seven, seven A is waterfront fence, unobstructed yards.
Oh, boy.
Boy, yeah, this is a hot topic. So is it Rod or Eric or no one?
Yes, I'll, I'll do a brief summary. So, uh, I don't think I need to go through all this in incredible detail. We've talked about it a lot. As you know, the last um, correspondence had two different versions of the ordinance. Basically would allow for decorative fences not exceeding four feet in height, uh, to be, uh, permitted in required yards abutting boatable waterways subject to certain conditions. Um, including fence materials, opacity and the like. Uh, the one version would make it so that if you were doing a fence, uh, in, in one of those yards, uh, abutting a boatable waterway, that you would have to go through special land use approval. The other version made it so that it would not be special land use approval. I would also point out that although you don't have this version in front of you, a third potential option that was kind of a hybrid based upon what the, some comments from the, from, from the building official who's present tonight, who could speak as well if he wanted to, is to potentially require the, the more detailed approval if you're on a, a large open body of water, such as if you're on one of the channels or on a bay, um, so to speak. But if you're on a canal, then it would be approved, um, administratively as long as it met all these standards. Um, that could be a, a third hybrid version of this because a lot, apparently a lot of the requests, um, for fences are on, um, on smaller canals, uh, and not necessarily out on the open water. And if the sensitivity is that, uh, you might need more scrutiny if it's on open water, then you could retain, um, special land use approval of those, for example, but then allow the other ones still meeting all these requirements to be approved administratively if they're on, uh, an interior canal. So that's a third option, basically. So, um, that's a brief summary and I'll return it back to you for discussion.
Thank you very much, Rod, because there's in our packet and Debbie, this might be, hopefully you got a lot of this information.
I did, I've been really busy reading it all.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Eyes are bugging out, actually.
All right, so are, are still, and here we go. And, um, Rod, pardon me if you're, I'm wrong, but we had a public hearing where we had a lot of input for one Mr. Burgess, I think, in his
That's correct.
is contained in, it really seemed to pertain, um, what you just described as version number three. So, um, I just wanted to acknowledge that we did again receive a lot of this information in our packet to try to get everybody back on the same page. Because fences have been an interesting discussion for many years. Gary, do you have anything you want to add? Cause I know you sent us, um, an email when we first had the public hearing, I believe it was, or shortly thereafter. So go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, yes, without a doubt, I'd love to be able to sit down with, uh, Rod and his team to, uh, discuss that third option and maybe clean things up. Uh, without a doubt, on the smaller canals, the lots are small and primarily, uh, they back their dwelling units right up to the required yard space. So all of the backyards, uh, would be in that unobstructed yard view. By, uh, addressing the ordinance to allow for, uh, the decorative fences to include on those lots, uh, the, uh, vinyl bonded, uh, chain link, uh, is something that they all like. They don't have any other choices uh, when their entire backyard is, uh, is in the unobstructed yard space. So, uh, when they're trying to contain their animals, they have no other place, uh, to put a chain link. Uh, and we do make sure that's a, the decorative type of vinyl infused, uh, on those lots. So, yeah, it's one size doesn't fit all. And, and, um, you know, if I could, uh, you know, speak with Rod and his, uh, his crew to come up with the verbiage on this, that would be helpful to, I think, all, to really nail this down. The biggest thing that really rose this up is, is yes, the open water fences. And we could easily define that as open water, uh, lots to include anchor, uh, to include Lake St. Clair, including Anchor Bay and, and the channels, uh, to be open water. And in those particular unobstructed yard spaces, fences would not be allowed without going through the planning commission for special land use. Uh, that way, any fence within the required yard space would have to come before you. Uh, and I think that would be a great idea. Uh, but I think just nailing down, uh, you know, some of the points, uh, that Rod has made changes that if we could critique it and really not, uh, totally disrupt the ordinance because overall it, it works. But there are some areas that we could do better on. Thank you.
Agreed.
Thank you, Gary. Appreciate that.
Mark has a comment?
Go ahead.
What Gary just mentioned is, uh, something I've been thinking about for quite a while, and I don't know if I discussed it with him or not, but he actually quoted what I had, uh, jotted down here. So I'm in total agreement. Thanks, Gary.
Any other board member?
I would tend to, uh, this is Keith Bell. I would tend to agree with that, uh, sentiment. Um, my only concern is definition, we would definitely, uh, have to put some verbiage in there with a clear-cut definition of what is open water versus what is canal. Common sense would dictate one from the other. However, I think we need to be within the letter of the law and have specifics, whether it's specific streets that abut open water or specific descriptions. But otherwise, great idea.
Sounds good. What I have planned is, yes, to define that in definitions on open waterfront lots and, uh, canal inlet and other shoreline recesses that are not directly on an open water, uh, open body of water. Absolutely, uh, if we put those in definition and maybe even, uh, incorporate both of those under, uh, 3.29, the unobstructed, uh, yard space, uh, to have one as being the open water lots and one to be the canal lots.
I think, uh, if it's a dredged now, it'd make a difference too. Most canals are dredged. That would clear up quite a bit right there.
Yeah, I think, uh, how we term it is boatable waterways. Uh, so if it's deep enough to run boats in it, uh, that's where we, we look at that. Yeah, lots that have the small, uh, real small canals that can't, uh, can't have a boat on them, uh, just because of the size, um, don't really, aren't really included in this.
Yeah. Chris Hiltunen, you have anything to say or?
I mean, I, I was going back through all the emails and stuff and it looks like, I mean, most are complaints from residents, basically, they don't want fences. It doesn't matter if it's decorative or not. So I, I think, I think Gary's got a good point, um, that that the, the ones that are on the river and maybe on the lake should, should have special land use so that there is some input from, um, from neighbors, right? Cause that would, that would be, uh, would there be a public hearing on that as well? Or at least notice for neighbors.
Notices.
Have input.
Public hearing, right, put special land use.
But then it also puts the onus on us to approve or deny individual requests, correct?
So, right.
So that, I mean, that obviously could become contentious.
Then they have to go to, uh, Deborah and the appeals board.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm, I'm always in favor of sort of streamlining things so the rules are equal for everyone. I think it just makes things easier for everybody, like for our board, I think. But I also understand the residents', um, concern with, with their open waterfront. Um, so I don't know, I guess I would, I would be in favor of having Gary work with Rod on a, uh, a third proposal. I, I think that's what it sounds like everybody's looking for. Maybe it's a good hybrid of it all and bring it back so we can maybe, maybe move on it for everyone.
So if we do, yeah, we can do that. And then what would happen is once you look at the new draft, um, then we'd set a new public hearing.
I like the idea. Sounds good.
Sounds good.
About Robert, you find anything to say there or?
Just for the third, uh, version.
Okay.
The way it sounds like it's going, so.
Your inching post would do a good solution.
I, I think that we have a solution where if it gets to be a little nasty, they'll have to come for special land use. If we can take care of those small lots that where you don't have unobstructed yard space at all anymore, uh, we can help those people. I think that should just about clarify it.
So Gary and Rod, are you gonna get together and kind of tweak the third version and then come back to us with a clean version, right?
Yes.
And then we can set a public hearing?
Right. Yeah, so we'll try to get another draft, um, for your next meeting.
Perfect.
And then if you're happy with that, you can then set a public hearing.
Sounds like plan. Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Sure.
Sounds good.
Being negative about it. So that, thank you, guys. I really appreciate it. Would be nice to get this to where it needs to be at this point, so.
Madam Chairman, may I ask a question?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Hi, this is Debbie. Um, I see there's two different versions. One says in approving a special land use, one draft. And then the second draft is says in improving fence plans, the planning commission imposed reasonable conditions. So one is a special land use and the other version is just an approval.
Correct. Those, those were the two versions the planning commission previously was considering whether or not to treat these fences as a special land use or to just allow them to be approved without a special land use.
So this part has not been voted on yet.
No, it has not. You're, you're gonna see a new version.
Those are options.
All right, thank you.
We're just gonna pick one.
Got it.
We're gonna have a third option, hopefully a very clean copy at the next meeting, so it might make it a little easier. Okay? So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Problem. All right, um, we look forward to seeing it next month and that'd be great. So I'm going to move on to item number seven B, which is short-term rentals.
So I'll be, um, presenting this one. Um, so this is, uh, another issue that's been previously discussed by the commission.
Could you turn up your volume a little too?
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, so this was, this was previously discussed last fall. Um, you're not as far along with this topic as you are with, uh, the fences. Um, you have not had a public hearing on any ordinance language, so this is, um, a, another introduction of the issue. Um, if you recall, uh, we talked about the zoning ordinance bed and breakfast, bed and breakfast lodgings language uh, as being, um, not entirely addressing all types of, of rental properties, specifically Airbnb or VRBO, short-term rentals, um, which are newer, uh, newer product, internet-based. Um, they're, they're different than bed and breakfasts in that breakfast is typically not served. Um, the, the homeowner may not be, uh, present. You may not have any interaction with, um, the homeowner or the agent. Um, so, um, we, one approach, we, the first approach we, we took was to just look at the bed and breakfast zoning ordinance language. We kind of left off that discussion with looking at what Ira Township, uh, has been doing. Um, they've, um, updated their general ordinance, uh, related to a term called vacation rentals. Um, so this, this could be, uh, an, uh, another approach that you take. Um, and those are provided at the, at the bottom of the memo, um, to address this term of vacation rentals instead of trying to clean up the bed and breakfast lodgings. Um, so, um, at the end of the memo, we provided the Ira, uh, general ordinance, which we wrote. Um, that would need to be, um, tweaked quite a bit, um, for Clay, but the, the concept is the same. Um, where you have a registration process, a local agent, and then their requirements. So this registration would apply to existing short-term rentals. Um, for Ira, they get a year, uh, to get into that registration process. So it provides some accountability, um, for the township if there are complaints. So they're aware of where these rentals are, um, things like that. There's limitations on occupancy. Um, Ira requires two occupants, maximum per bedroom plus two per floor, and you can't count attic or basement. And then there's a penalty and revocation process. So, um, you could pursue that registration approach that Ira does. You could pursue a licensing approach. Uh, and then the, the last part is this is kind of a two-step process where, um, in the Ira ordinance, there's, there's, there are some non-zoning things covered in there. So that that would go to the township board, um, where the zoning, um, specific things like what district these are permitted in. If a special land use is required, things like that would come to before you. So, um, that could happen in either order. It could start as a policy decision with the township board and then come back to you, or it could start with you uh, with the zoning, uh, language and then proceed with the township board, um, with the additional registration or licensing, uh, language. So, um, that's all I have and, uh, would be glad to discuss with the commission.
If I could just make one comment at the end of that, one of the advantages of doing a, a general law ordinance, like the, 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 the one that would be outside of your zoning ordinance is that, um, with zoning, you have to provide for, um, grandfathering essential, essentially, okay, uses that were already in operation and they may continue. Uses that were already in operation and they may continue. With the general law ordinance, you can make it applicable to everybody. Regardless of whether or not they were in existence before, or if they're going to be in existence in the future. So that's why, particularly with. This type of use where there may be some who are trying to argue that they've got permission to do it and the township may take another position. All of that goes away because with a, with a general law ordinance that's in your general code. Everyone who does this would have to comply with that ordinance. And as, as this example you said had, there's even those that were already in existence had a certain number of days to come into compliance. So. That, that is an advantage to that approach. So I just thought I'd mention that.
That was a question I had when I looked at this. How many of those? BNB's, Airbnb's, whatever have you, are actually licensed or approved? Through a special land use in our township? Do we know?
There are none.
Thank you. So there would be nobody grandfathers, really?
Technically, you are correct.
Thank you.
So what about occupancy permits? Via inspections? That would be covered in the, in the, in the general law ordinance. You can require. Require that.
Another question I had Rod on, on that, is there a way to, to have like a maximum, maximum density of, of short term rentals in an area? You know, because I I know like the residents, I see some of them on here, you know, I, I, I know their desire would be to have zero. But, you know, say Stark, is there a way to limit the amount? That you could have on a certain road or in a certain area or in a certain district? Of short term rentals, you know, because I think that's a concern is that some of these streets may turn into nothing but short term rentals and a couple residents. So is that something that could be addressed?
Yes.
Okay.
I think that's actually a legitimate concern. And one of the issues is that if you have the entire block became short term rentals. Then you really don't have a neighborhood anymore. You don't have people looking out for the street. You know, you don't have the same benefits you get from a crime. Prevention perspective of people looking out as what's going on with the neighbors. And yeah, I think you absolutely could have a limitation to prevent over concentration.
And I guess another question is I've been making a couple notes. As part of the approval process, would there be like a site plan or something submitted so that? You know, to address parking issues? Because I know there's, with a lot of these short term rentals. Obviously, for, for the, the owners, they're trying to pack as many people and as many cars so they can increase their revenue. You know, for them, it's a revenue generating thing and I understand that. But for neighborhoods, it becomes, it becomes an issue. So would that be part of the process is a site plan to, to be approved for each? Each one that comes in front?
Yeah, it's really a plot plan more than a site plan, but it's, it's something that gets reviewed that to demonstrate that they in fact have the amount of parking spaces. Absolutely. That's, that's in, that's in the Ira version.
And then restrictions could be imposed upon them or maximums. I don't want to say restrictions, but you know, they, a maximum of three cars and. I know Ira, I read through the Ira ordinance and I know it does restrict the amount of people, but I didn't notice anything about parking. So.
No, there's a parking section in there too.
Is there?
Yeah, it's number eight.
It looks like a lot of the performance standards for the bed and breakfast could apply to the short term rentals too. You know, the paved, the paved streets and the parkies in there. Looks like we would just have to change a few things in here and. Probably add some. But I think a lot of it's covered right in there. But I wouldn't want it to be part of the bed and breakfast. It has to be separate.
Did I read somewhere where someone mentioned that it was easy to stop them on a private road?
It's covered the septic system.
It could.
How many swimming rooms and smoke detectors and. So I think we have a lot of structure right in it already.
What's the next move? Is the next move for the township board to make a recommendation to planning commission to move on this?
It's my understanding they've already given that direction. So the next. The next, the next move would be to actually, we could come back with a draft ordinance for your consideration.
I think that's where we were. We, we, we received over the last couple of months, a lot of information on regards to, from Rod and Eric. For other district, other areas, not just in Michigan that have tackled this topic. And part of that equation also involves the enforcement. Once we get there. To make it worthwhile, because it's a lot of work. There's no doubt about it. Just to say, here's your ordinance, but then somebody's gonna have to enforce if it's not being followed. So that's the other part that hopefully the township would be, once we get to the point of here's the ordinance, that they'd be willing to. Stand up behind it and take over and take care of it, you know?
Which one of the two approaches you mentioned would be easier to enforce?
I don't think. That it's, both of them are law, so.
It doesn't matter.
I don't think it really matters. But, but I, I think, I think the licensing outside the zoning is really the better way to go in this case.
The vi, the violations might have more impact than a zoning enforcement measure that's in the Ira.
May I say something?
Yep.
When I was reading this, I didn't see anything about insurance. I think that would be an important item to add under general regulations. Making sure that people have insurance if something happened, all these renters are in there.
They have a bond or something.
Yeah, making sure that they at least have the place insured.
Yeah, there should be type, some type of personal liability protection from the occupants. I agree with that.
Madam Chair, could I be recognized?
Yep.
I would like to say that I, I really do like the Ira Township ordinance. I mean, it's very well written. I think it covers all the bases. What I'd also like to, to have us consider is the initial registration process. Because these are popping up in the middle of neighborhoods. I would think that the initial registration would be done through the planning commission, perhaps under special land use. So that way we can have a public hearing of the people within three hundred feet of that to see if, if they're okay with. One of these being put in their neighborhood. Just as a suggestion, I think that would be a, a good way to start the process.
Any other comments or thoughts?
I guess you gotta, one thing you need to think about though is, is. You know, what if you have fifty people who wanna all of a sudden do this? You're gonna have a lot of special annuals hearings.
Be very busy.
Yeah. Well, something, I, I think we, obviously it's something to think about and to consider, absolutely. And but we. Give that one some thought in terms of the potential impact on your agenda.
They kind of correlate with the limitation of how many in the township like Chris Hilton was talking about, that type thing.
It could, that could impact it, yes.
Yeah.
I think one of the main things that we hear is the complaints of people in the neighborhoods that are next to these places. That they're trying to get up for work at five AM. They need to get their night's sleep and these guys. Generally on these short term rentals are there to party. And so the disruption of the neighborhood is really something that we need to, to put on the front burner. And by doing a public hearing, that allows us to know what kind of issues that we have or potentially have. And, and if there's another avenue, but I'd hate it just to be, you know, if you want a short term rental, you go ahead and register. And if you wanted to deal with it through the complaint process, and even in the Ira Township. You know, ordinance, they do have in there that basically three strikes and you're out. We can pull their, their permit. If you wanted to go down that, but that's, that's damage control, in my opinion, if we're waiting to hear the complaints. By starting off by just having the initial. You know, because we don't have a rental ordinance at, at this point. You know, like Mark had said, you know, to have, have a regular rental ordinance. You know, we don't have any of that to bet, to put our hats on. But to start the process here to have it just the initial and, and maybe afterwards, we can do it administratively. But I think initially, the ones that are going to apply for one of these. Registration permits are probably the ones that are in operation right now. That potentially are having trouble with the neighbors.
Can I say something with that? I, I think maybe restricting the density overall in the township is something that I'd prefer to go to. Having special land uses or, and for us to go and say which ones can and can't. You're, you're getting, because of the neighbors, not wanting one there, you're getting to the point, even though they're in the neighborhoods. There's a reason why they're there and we're supposed to be a recreation community. So if you're sitting there saying. Well, all these, all these neighbors on the waterways don't want these short term rentals there. You're kind of getting to the point of. If somebody's buying one and possibly looking at that or bought one and looking at moving and keeping it isn't for a short term rental. It's, you know, I'm kind of one of those that looks at it as. We have ordinances, but at the same time, if you're gonna sit there and complain about everything your neighbor does, you should have bought the property. So we kind of gotta watch what we do with that because if we sit there and start saying, well, you can't have that because your neighbors don't want it. You're gonna step on a lot of feet and you're gonna, you're kind of inhibiting the recreation atmosphere that we want.
So a group of neighbors essentially could just come in and shut it down whenever they wanted to through those special land use process.
Yeah, so if we develop the correct language in here, it could just be incorporated into that.
So I, I'm kind of more for the density.
Let's find.
Allowing so many per year or whatever over having special land use.
All right.
Good point.
Any other comments or suggestions? I know this is a topic that needs to obviously be addressed sooner than later because we're approaching again, it's January, but the. Season's gonna come up where our community is a boating community and. We know in the past, the people who have been in front of us happen to be on canals and neighborhoods that half the houses are now rentals and. It's become an issue topic that we need to take care of. So. Rod or Eric, do you have a general idea that we're trying to have or do you need to ask more questions of us? What do you think?
I think, I don't know, I think we can, we can put something together for you to consider.
Respect for the neighborhood and respect for the person who wants to operate one of these.
We'll give you some options.
One other question I have.
Sure, go ahead.
Sorry, if, is there a difference in the body which would be? Dictating whether, you know, going in and for the enforcement body between the general law and. The ordinance aspect because would it make a difference in the enforcement? Because I know that's where we have problems at.
The same, same enforcement entity.
It's a big responsibility on enforcement because it is a problem we've had in the community for a very long time, and not just in regards to rentals, but in a lot of different aspects. So. Putting ordinances in and then we have nobody to back them up for us or the homeowners or property owners. It, it gets very frustrating for the public in general, let alone anybody else who's been working on these. So. I personally would really appreciate our planners to come back as soon as possible with. Some language so we can keep moving this forward very quickly in a responsible fashion. So we can get to a public hearing and see what the public has to say.
And just also, so you know.
Yeah.
You go the general law route and you don't go the zoning route. That, that technically is just a general recommendation from you. It does not require a public hearing by the planning commission. Only public hearing would be required if you amend the zoning ordinance.
Well, that's a big distinction.
Yeah, huge.
I like that better.
Because then it just goes, you, you basically you does, you're just sending a recommendation. To the township board and then the township board takes it up like a general law ordinance and it doesn't, that, none of those other ordinances. Require a public hearing.
I, I'm, I'm looking at the, one of the attachments in here about the Airbnb on. Seventy eight, nine, sixty nine Inglewood Drive. And under the nice description, the young man indicates that. Two thousand square foot home with two boat wells and a fifty five, fifty five foot seawall. Parking for at least eight vehicles slash trailers. How do you get that many vehicles on a fifty five foot lot?
Very carefully.
But you don't want to drive out of there at one AM after you've had about five bottles of the good stuff.
Oh.
This has definitely been a discussion over the years in our community. We need to find a way to balance it with everybody here if we can do so. So. I guess Rod and Eric, please see if you can put something together. You've kind of got our ideas. And if you need to work with Gary in the building department, along with the other topic we have already discussed, it'd be great. And we can hopefully. Get it, definitely get it back for us for next month. How's that sound?
Sounds great.
Okay. Any other comments before we move on to the next item? All right. Thank you, everyone. I'm hearing nothing. I'm gonna move on to item number eight, which is planning consultants report.
I don't have anything specific. We're kind of in the middle of newsletters here. I think we're trying to get another one out next month. So we don't have a. Specific newsletter to report to you and go over this time. Eric, did you have anything?
No, we have the new website, the, the company website based newsletter too that we, that you haven't seen yet. So we can provide.
Yeah, that's right. We're gonna, we're actually gonna do an email blast of the newsletter now when it goes out. So it'll make it easier to, to get it to. To a lot of people that way. So yeah, look for that for the next one.
Appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Item number nine would be ZVA representatives report. I'll reach out to Debbie. How's that?
Very good. We had, we did not have a meeting for January and February, but what I, they were canceled. So what I'd like to do. Is kind of recap what we've been seeing in the last few meetings. We're seeing a lot of action in the colony. Boat houses, rebuilding of boat houses over there. The other thing we tackled were sheds over there and they have over at the colony. A association, but the association has never been, the bylaws of that have never been recorded. And a lot of times what happens is over there, the board association approves things, but they still have to come before us. And so that's what's going on, you know, pretty much what we've been dealing with. And a couple fences, not too much.
Good. Well, thank you for the report. Appreciate it. Item number ten is board representatives report, which would be Mark.
I'd like to welcome Debbie to the planning commission as well as the ZVA.
Thank you.
And just one comment about, you know, we're talking about. A lot of new business concerning short term rentals and a lot of applications that comes to, may want to start looking at even before that. Looking at two meetings per month. I'll just throw that out there. Other than that, I have nothing.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate it. Number eleven is chairperson's report. I really don't have anything too much to say, but as far as Mark's comment about two meetings. A month. It's always, well, since we've been doing one meeting a month, it's a standard that if the building department in. Coordinating with Rod and planners, they're the ones who receive the material quickly. And if we need to do more meetings, they're the first, Cindy Babish will call me and say, can we schedule a special meeting, which we've done in the past. Because we've done two meetings a month, we've done one meeting a month. But we are always open to scheduling a meeting and I think Rod and the building department have been on board with that when we need to do that for sure. So. And then I'm not gonna change that approach for sure, but I rely on the building department through, usually Cindy's my, you know, contact person. And Rod and getting where we need to be. I know, go ahead, Rod.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, one thing we can do too is we start to work on some of your agenda items for twenty twenty one. You have a list. Um, if you find you want to move some of those through faster, then you could consider a special meeting for some of those as well. So I I think we should maybe revisit that at each meeting and determine whether or not you think you need to do that.
Yeah, no problem. Um, we also have a request for a pre-site committee meeting, which I got an email today about. I think Rod, maybe you did too and Gary. So um, we do have that and that's something that's held us, you know, with a smaller group for sure. So hopefully we get that taken care of. And other than that, I don't have anything further. So other than happy new year, we're moving along. So okay, item number twelve is planning commission members' comments. Anybody have a comment?
I do.
Go ahead.
Well, as a new member, I look forward to working with everyone. And and uh, I'm glad to be here.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Any other planning commission members?
Just, I wanted to thank Gary for jumping in and helping out, like especially with the fencing and stuff, a lot of good ideas. I know he's impacted by a lot of this uh stuff coming through him. So um, it's nice having his input on that end of it.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Christine.
Um, I just wanted to say thanks to Rod and Eric again for um their continued good work in bringing us language that's helping us to get these things taken care of. And obviously Gary for your input tonight, that was awesome to, you know, get it straight, as you could say, from the horse's mouth. Uh, appreciate all of that. Yeah, welcome to Debbie and um, I really think the uh short-term rental is something we really need to get as a priority. Um, people have been struggling with this for a couple of years now, obviously from information we've received and um I would say sooner than later that we need to do this.
Yeah, I agree.
Me too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other board member comments?
I'd like to welcome Debbie and happy new year, everyone, and sorry for all the distractions.
She's adorable.
Thank you.
It's okay. Anyone else? Not hearing anything. I'm going to move on to item number thirteen, which is public comments, and I'm going to enlist Christine's help if you could help me with this.
Okay, Kevin, if you want to unmute, Kevin McDougall.
Good evening, good evening, everybody. I appreciate you taking, taking me first because um I just wanted to voice my opinion on this again. Um, so I did a little homework too, and I appreciate Whitey looking up the address. Um, and the specs on that house. So just so you know, it's only a four-bedroom house and he advertises that it can accommodate thirteen guests. So I have almost every single week, I have at least twelve because everybody wants to either go fishing or they bring all their families there. Um, totally filled with parking boats and cars all throughout um all the time. I just sent some pictures today and uh, Madam Chair, I'd probably like to grab your email and I'm going to share that with you.
Sure.
That my cottage this week and I had two dogs come after my wife that she couldn't even get out of the car, uh, out of the house. I snapped a picture of it. I had uh dog poop all through my backyard. I sent the pictures to uh the owners and crickets. Never responded, never did nothing. Um, so Rod, I I appreciate you guys wanting to start drawing something up, but I think you need to approach us from um, when I purchased this, this was an R1 residential, there were no rentals in here. So for Robert to say that maybe I should have bought these empty homes, um, I I think you're out of line on that, that this is a boating community and all those people that purchased it want to enjoy it. I have probably the worst one you could ever have. Most people have Airbnbs with only two people in there. And you know what? There's some pretty good families that do come in there. I'm always cordial, but when you're getting twelve, fourteen, up to twenty with portage Johns being brought in because there's so many restrooms that you're going to make an ordinance that all he's got to do is pull a permit. The problem's going to be is how is that going to be policed? Who's going to say that, all right, I didn't have twenty people there? Do I have to take pictures every week? Um, it, this is a major issue. Um, I don't think the township is gaining anything by this. I think if you have a good neighborhood, which we have down uh Inglewood, um, we all try and take care of our houses. Um, I've reached out to Blight Control and uh um, Gary, I try and go by the book. He's been awesome. I think we're very fortunate to have somebody like Gary that is assisting us in this.
Yep.
Um, you guys don't make a lot of money. A lot of it is so minimal and for Gary to be sticking out his neck on this and and trying to help. And then to hear Rod say that, you know what, we can take this to the planning commission and, you know, pass the buck and so there won't be no hearings. I don't like hearing that. I think we all got to work together on this. But um, it's unfair that I'm probably have the worst one around. Um, but I I'm sick of it and eventually it's going to get that people are going to start moving out. So once you get to the point that you start losing residents because of the Airbnbs, that's when you are going to lose all your base, all your boating, family fun, and you're just going to have a bunch of hoodlums coming around, just go party for two days the weekend and you're going to have a lot of problems. I don't know how much more I can say, but um, you know, I I am going to be, like I said earlier, I'm going to be at every meeting. But I think you're trying to accommodate the Airbnbs instead of trying to fight it and go with your residents. And if Inglewood doesn't like it, why can't we have that option? Then you tell us, how do we have an option of eliminating it when all the people that have been there for years have um, never had to deal with it? So I don't know which way to go on this or how I could even help on this, but um, I have some pictures that I I keep trying to save now, but it's getting worse and worse and I never had it go this far into the season. But now they're running to hockey teams that um, they had tournaments and I had like four families and they're from New York and they're out of town. They don't care. They speed down our streets. I've had at least people putting up signs to slow them down, but it's not enforced. And you're not going to be able to enforce the amount of people that go in these rooms because he's making big money on it. That's all I got to say for today.
Well, thank you, Kevin. We really appreciate your comments. Um, next.
Paula Burgess, could you want to speak? Paula? Paula?
Not hearing anything.
Tom Essie. Tom's Essie.
Hello, hello.
Go ahead.
Hey, this is Tom Purcell, seven eighty-two Lake Drive. Uh, I've been working on this for quite a while. Uh, I was the one that sent those original packages. I've been going by getting all the neighbors uh names and addresses because a lot of them are elderly. They're not into the Zoom meeting. They can't go to it. So we've been kind of working on this for, you know, like three years now. And uh Kevin lives across from us. I live across from that one. There's three over there. And I think what's gonna, what's going to help a lot is uh the verbiage you got already on section seven zero one. The purpose is, the purpose of R1 is to provide a stable, a stable and sound environment. So that automatically eliminates all that. Another thing, this is a private road. Um, uh, the subdivision starts in the middle of Inwood. They got two subdivisions there. Each one had to give ten feet. So they got a decent road, eighteen feet. Lake Drive is in the middle of Roy T. Gilbert, plot number twelve, and our road is eleven feet wide. Stark is two subdivisions. Each subdivision gave uh right away. So they got a little bit wider over there. But these are all private and they're just way too small for this. And the the thing about uh, what uh Rod said about uh letting so many in a certain area. I mean, that might be all right if the area is designed for it, like uh the colony or the the bird lanes or something where you can reach out or move a little bit here. Uh, there's, there, uh, last year I had to file a police report for a reckless uh operating motor vehicle or boats. Uh,
oh.
They uh, 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 some kids come in there, rented it. And before the lady got done showing them about the place, first thing they did was jump into Pontoon and take off as she's trying to talk to them, tell them about the place. And it obviously was the first time he rode a boat, full throttle back, full throttle forward, and he just missed my boat. So I called the police, made a police report and it's every weekend. So you know, obviously they're going to be here somewhere, but they are not going to be on a private road. This is R1, single family only. And I showed you like uh, I gave you four of them last time, three of them are in Inwood and one is on Stark. And I don't know if you did anything with it yet or not, but Stark is operating as a duplex and that is strictly against the law. It is not for a single-family R1 area. So that one can be shut down right now. As far as I'm concerned, they're, they're not legal and and uh Kathy, you mentioned it last time we talked in September when we started talking about this and it was almost like a deer in headlights look. You didn't really know what was going on or realize it was such a problem. But it is a problem and you know, maybe because uh it's such a problem is because our area is so small and it's more, more impacted, you know? And maybe, maybe there's a few going on down in the bird lanes and if it's minor, then it's not really a problem. So it doesn't come to, you know, come to your ears. So you don't really know what's going on. If you don't hear nothing, then you think everything's all right. So I don't know if some of the other neighborhoods uh in town, uh, you know, the smaller single roads, but that that's a problem and the verbiage is already in place. It's not supposed to be here. Bed and breakfasts not allowed on a private road. And there's a reason for that. It's too small. So I I know they're not going to be in this area, but how do you enforce it? And then you're going to figure out, you know, where they go and and who can have them. But I think that thing about uh, not letting them in or or not giving the residents the right, we're the ones here paying all the bills. And we moved out here, we worked on this, this is our home and it is single-family only. So I don't know, I don't know how else to, you know, state it or what, but just uh, it's just becoming a real problem. Don't even want to use our backyards now and that's what we were here for. They say, oh, we want to build, we want a recreation and we want people to come here. Well, that's why we're here and we're the ones paying the taxes and doing everything. You get a guy that comes up here, wants to put his boat in there, there's four pickup trucks, four trailers, four bass boats tied up here. And then when they come back, they might have this floaty all the way across the canal where a boat can't get by. And uh, one time there was a a trailer there with a kegger where they ran uh air, air conditioners. It was like a homemade kegger with air conditioners on the front of it. They took the screens out, ran extension cords inside the house and and uh, there's like a frat party or something, had a portage John brought in. Um, when you have these bass guys come here, so they bring a lot of money to the township. That's crazy. They come here with their coolers and the only thing they do, they might go buy some more beer or go buy some bait, but that is not uh, helping the community. You know, they bring all their food and and then this thing about these bonfires. I don't know when that thing ever started. Years ago, the rule was no fires unless you're cooking on it. Well, now I got all these fire pits there and one guy tried to start a fire there last summer, winds blowing out of the north. My house smelled like smoke for two days and uh you couldn't get the smoke out of it. And that, that, the lot is so small over there. The fire pit is about three or four feet from the fence and the Steve next door, his car is probably right near that. There probably wasn't, the fire pit was probably six feet from his car. I mean, it's just, I don't know where that thing started, but it's not supposed to be here. Maybe a little uh gas fire where you get around it and, but this stuff about singing kumbaya and drinking a bunch of beer and having a portage on there and it's just way out of hand. So I don't know. Uh, we, like I said, we're gonna, we'll be on every meeting and uh, you know, obviously, not, I shouldn't say obviously. Hopefully, you know, they do some of the um, rules for the uh bed and breakfasts, use some of them, but especially the one on private. I mean, the reason it says private is because there is a problem. And so that would be real easy. And another thing to to enforce it, all you got to do is just say, is this, this, does a mail come to you here or not? If you don't, if your name's not on the mail, you're trespassing and the, all you got to do is just ask them to leave. It'd be real easy to enforce. It's your house, you get your mail there, cut and dry, very simple. Anybody can enforce that. The police can go down there knocking on the door. Is this your house? Let me see your address. Oh, you don't belong here? You have to leave. So I I know, I know you have rules and stuff like that, but how do you enforce them? That's, that's a, that's a, that's a big point. Tough point.
Thank you for your comments, Tom. We really appreciate it and we know it's a tough one.
If I can help any way, but uh, you know, it's just frustrating, you know?
No, it is frustrating and that's what we're trying to, we're, we're going to try to deal with this for sure.
Yeah. Let me ask, let me ask a quick question. If you guys are driving around and you see something wrong, uh, would you turn it in? Like, say you're driving down M twenty-nine and you see some blight on along the road, would you turn that in or would you actually have to wait for us uh public to make a formal complaint? Or I mean, is it, is it legal or is it ethical for you guys to turn something in on your own?
Guess I never thought about it.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, you would, you have the right. I mean, you're a resident here and if you've seen something, you know, yeah, you know, there's uh other things, but I just wondered if uh, if you guys, you know, kept an eye out and say, oh, this, you know, eh, well, you might, you might send a blake over, take a look at that, something don't look right or something. I just, it was just a curious question.
I've told people that what they had was wrong, but I wouldn't turn them in.
Yeah, okay.
I'd like to say a comment on that uh, as a board rep. You can, you can make a complaint anytime, night or day at the township, regardless of what it is.
Uh huh. I mean, I mean, do you guys do it? I mean, I know I can and I know everybody down here can. I mean, I got a pile of complaint forms right here. But I was just wondering, i- if your day-to-day activity, drive down the road and you see some uh, some brush growing or a boat trailer parked not right or or houses in in poor shape, do you just turn up? Turn your back to it and drive on or would you turn something in?
I I'm just going to say that the 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 planning commission is not the enforcement arm.
Yeah, no, no, I'm just saying this is a person. Yeah, yeah, I don't want you guys to drive around and.
I don't think you guys need to really answer that question.
Well, I can answer it from the board rep. If I see it, I'll go talk to the supervisor about it and I have.
Okay, that's fine. That's good enough.
At this point, we're, we've said it numerous times, we're not the enforcement and that is a really tough, is a really.
And nobody would talk to me if I did.
It's a really tough subject because it is enforcement issue.
I appreciate everything you guys are doing and if we can help you anyway, just give us a call.
Oh, we, we know you're there. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Uh, who's the next? Um, thank you, public comments.
Earl Sampson. Earl Sampson.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Kathy, you had drawn up my letter for the master plan. Oh, do you need my address? Six oh three nine Point Trumbull Road.
Thank you.
The amendment to the master plan, Focus Arrow Pearl Beach map. Could you read that letter so people can hear what I, when I'm asking for an amendment? I asked this in another meeting in the past. I had requested this amendment.
You can read it. Go right ahead.
Okay, it says, please consider and amend the future land use of Pearl Beach map. The request is to amend the map to reflect residential transition zone to the east of the Pearl Beach Park. East of the pier is a section that is bordered by two marinas. There is plenty of room for the development. Map shows this section as waterfront residential. Please amend the residential, please amend to residential transition and consider amending residential transition on west side of pier to waterfront residential. There is a proposed parking lot site plan that has an entrance to the north of Gabriel Marine for access to the Pearl Beach Pier in Johnny Legas Bar. The east area is more favorable location for development, a nice community feel. It has access to water and plenty of area for the proposed buildings and connectivity. I had sent in signatures on a petition sent by Cindy in the building department on October first of two thousand twenty that contains signatures from the Clay Township residents on the west side and taxpayers that are concerned with the master plan downtown Pearl Beach. Thank you for the consideration and the change.
Thank you, Carol.
Consider that for an amendment to the master plan.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments. Um, next public person comment?
Um, so, all right, Lawrence Pronax.
Is that it?
Lawrence Pronax. Last, last chance, Lawrence Pronax. Dave Mason?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I'm good. I'm good. I, I think, uh, everybody spoke well of, uh, what I had my concerns with. Thank you very much.
Thank you. William Odom?
Yes, uh, I, I live on, uh, Inglewood and, uh, Kevin and, um, Tom, uh, stated what I have to say. I've lived there since nineteen seventy-three. And I, with being organ, overtaken by Airbnbs, there are three on the street right now and I'm sick of it. You can't do nothing. You got trailers. People are walking the dogs all over your property. They, they don't care. And, um, thanks for the time and stuff, folks. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
I'm going to try Paula Burgess again. Paula Burgess. One last time, Paula Burgess. And I believe that's the only other public we have.
All right. Obviously with our public comments, we know that this, um, issue about long-term, short-term rentals is a topic that we need to take care of and address as soon as we can. So, um, Rod and Eric, we look forward to see what you come up with, uh, sooner than later. How's that? Okay. Um, at this particular point, I'm just going to move on to item number 14, which is adjournment.
Madam Chair, motion to adjourn?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Host. Thank you, everyone, for attending the meeting. Appreciate it and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Happy Valentine's Day.
You too.
Hey, Whitey, we're going to have, uh, miss grant dinner?
Virtual.
Whitey's muted.
How are you going to fit two hundred people into that hall six feet apart?
We can do it outside.
You all day long, you stage them so much of the time.
Uh, I would appreciate it if you'd come and cook all day.